Self ordered. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Do you want to put that on this agenda?
Yeah, because there's a lot of discussion around that. So put it on this agenda.
Sure.
The Habs Per West. Make that H five. Any other items? Here or none? Do we have most to approve? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Delegation's presentations done tonight? Minutes of the previous meeting, June twenty first. Everybody's read through those? No any air or air missions? If none, can we have most to approve? Secondary?
Second.
Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Artwork update. I took right off when I heard it was standing upright. And they, it is standing upright, I guess, down at the yard is home. Anybody is, I guess Mike, if anybody's welcome to go and see it. So down at the Jansons. It's later on, I don't know, probably the door, piece of wire, wall, yeah, wall. So he's now in the process of placing, getting it right. So I guess we're close.
Don't get closer.
Closer, so, but if you go by and he's up in his yard, pop in, have a look at it. I tried that one day, they were, they weren't home, so. So it's close. Have a look. Now see if he can give us a time commitment now that he has it over the shop.
Actually took less time than you thought it would be.
He did say that, yes, he did. Took less time than you thought. So we're here, I was hoping for May, but it wasn't.
I was gonna say year of May.
Year of May, we didn't say what side. Okay, so we are, we're making progress. C L report.
Okay. So in planning department, we had four development permits among subdivision approval issued generating seven hundred dollars in fees for the month of June twenty twenty one. So we have a development permit at seventy five Prince William Street for a deck. Eighty two Saint George Street for a single family dwelling. Twenty two Cowling Street for a deck. And fifty three Sydney Street for a single family dwelling. In the building department, there were six building permits issued generating five hundred seventy four dollars in permit fees for the month of June. Basically, they were for renovations on twenty six Mount Street. Single family dwelling on thirty two Saint George Street. Single family dwelling at one twenty seventh Second Avenue. The deck at Prince William Street seventy five. And a deck at twenty two Cowling Street. And eighty two Saint George Street, a single family dwelling.
Based on the price of lumber, that two thousand dollar value deck, was that a stat?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say. Reincarnating. The fire department, basically, they did catch up on some reports. So in the month of April, there was twelve fire calls, three were in town, nine municipality. Six calls in May, three town, two municipality. Thirteen calls from the month of June, ten in town, three municipality, but eight of those in town were sort of going outside. All alarms.
High humidity, probably.
So the office of C L, outdoor movies, communities, building futures through turning the tides and partnering with Deck and provide outside movies for the community this summer. They are utilizing the D C Center Stage and grass area and are planning to feature their first movie on July twentieth at nine thirty P M. They will be conducting COVID screening and following outdoor guidelines and essential distance and mask protocols. Senior management teams, we met and discussed and prepared the capital investment plan draft for the presentation to Council at tonight's meeting. Shoreline Restaurant Memorial, I have spoken to Terry Gilbert concerning her presentation to Council. She wanted to know what should be included in the proposal requested by Council. I told her that I'd meet with the owners of the property to discuss the project. And I had met with the owners to discuss the project and they will sit down once themselves to further discuss the project and determine the scope of the project. Once they've done that, they will meet with me to discuss how to obtain maybe your assistance to the project. Basically, it involves their good accord. I did explain to them that any kind of pain inside of the building was not something that they would want to entertain. They understood that fully and said that's not necessarily what they would want anyway, so. Frank Macintosh Memorial Park, the sign and patent has arrived. We are currently waiting on Nova Scotia Power to scope the location of the power source for the family and park. Council should give some consideration whether we will have an official opening of that park.
Don't think that we need to do it, that we'll have to have something.
You know, I, I need a win exactly, but. All rise.
Doesn't end like that, yeah.
The only other thing I want to add is that I've booked some vacation times, what Council wanted. July twenty sixth, August third, and August twenty third to September seventh, vacations. There in, seriously breaking that on the topic. That's my report, any questions?
Looks like it. Okay, we'll move on to Director of Finance, Paul Mathieu, you got stuff to add to that or highlight to?
No, the operating budget, we've already gone over it. We're looking at the next meeting, the capital budget, we're looking at later on in this meeting. Water and sewer bill, non-paid disconnects. It is important to note that we are going to be following the standard operating procedure this month. So anybody met balances, met the criteria, June thirtieth, we'll be following up and potentially turning up this water. And that hasn't happened for quite a while, so we should make everyone aware that it's being back to the normal procedure. And we did have some rental payment arrears on our residential property that we own. We've worked with them and they're, I believe they're going to do flying back up to current. They're two month in arrears right now and I believe we're going to work five months. And our fifty three Mount Street is finally fully paid up.
With the rental property, I know it's some side off, new worker, he's come off or.
Well, yeah. He's, he's trying to fix some bad pieces.
It's hard to find that kind of lock, so.
Yeah, I don't know where he found it.
Oh, he found it?
He found it.
He's working up to the night.
Oh, that's why he, he found it first before he told me. Yeah. Someone must have had some of the yards, good for him. Any questions for Matthew on that? None, Director of Public Works.
So I finished working over two needed artists, they were dark, worked on mostly the budget, capital budget. I received two quotes for up on replacing a roof on McGrath slash the office, the main pumping station. We had, we had to have a new SCAP computer installed with the F C P, the other one went to put on us. Completed a grant application for flooding, for flooding of the rack road. Got quotes for paving three different street sections in town. And we worked, I was working with the group of engineers on possible development in town. Waste water. Spleeded daily duties and water tests. Cleaned U V number one, completed five water samples, mowed the main pumping station, and mowed SmithCo. And sold the new light for house on King Street.
Well, the, I see somebody on Facebook thanking the town for a quick response for fixing a leak on King Street.
We had two water leaks yesterday, one on King Street and one on Burke Street. So the guys worked most of the day yesterday on those directly. So streets, we ditched on the south end, we dug some test holes, no source of power. The reason we do that, sometimes when they're close to our old mains, we like to dig the hole just so there's no, yeah, oopsies. So we had a lot of tosses in SmithCo, so we had a whole bunch of it screened. So we've been using that around, around town now, because there's no cost to us, so. We put bark mulch down at the pond on the gardens down there. T I R's painted the center lines, they leave the gardens and our baskets are all installed, all of our window boxes. We worked on West Street ditching, or Saint George, Saint Mary's. The students have been working pretty diligently on doing all the parks. You can probably see they ate all the walkways and they're doing all the leading and stuff for us this summer. They picked all the rocks at the, what we call the dog park, so we can mow without hitting rocks. And we completed all of our line painting in town too. The guys painted the layhouse, which is very noticeable. And they cleared the daily duties, liquid duties. Some equipment, the new five ton had a small pool leak. And building maintenance, there's waiting for one part for the sprinkler, everything's supposed to be finished up Wednesday, so. Second avenue extension on the south end has started, the water main is almost in. They dug today for the storm sewer, all the super laterals are installed. And we're doing the make tie-in for the watering next Tuesday or Wednesday, but. And as I already mentioned, we applied for what they call the frick, flood risk, flood risk, can't remember. Anyway.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, that's it, program for the rack room. Yeah, so then we have three students working for us, one's through the water, through the water pressure and two through the town. So for the summer, they've done a thing that's August twenty sixth, so.
Where's the application go for frick?
Frick. Frick, that was the federal provincial.
Provincial.
Well, I think of it, Ed, if you, if you're at Pearl Jansons and you're coming back, it was a wet spot there.
They're ready to say it's a leaker. Not, we dug it up before, couldn't find anything, but we're gonna have to begin because it's exactly the same as it was last summer. And with as dry as it is, it shouldn't be there, so there's something there somewhere. It's probably up the hill further, so we can't find it, so.
Any other questions, sir? Special constable.
Report for D A S, sadly, premise report for the month of June, ten Carlton's, still no change. Thirteen mount property had been cleaned up, garbage wiring cage had been replaced with a proper garbage bin. One forty first Avenue, as the administrator, had been informed that the two vehicles that are parked in the back of the building are owned by two fishermen who are at this time working down in Yarmouth. And the landlord assured me that he will notify to have the vehicles moved to a proper parking area. Eighty Victoria Street, had received complaints regarding the unsateliness of the property. The grass had gone for quite, quite some time uncut, dangerously high around the home, neighboring homes. I managed to contact the owner and explain the seriousness of the matter and he did cut the grass, so. Twenty two Saint George Street, same thing as the, the grass was very high there. I managed to contact the realtor, who in turn contacted the owner, and it has been cut. Fifty six Saint George Street, this property had a serious concern both with the building on the lot and the tall grass surrounding it. The grass has been cut since then and when I was talking with the owner, she's in the process of having a demolition coming in from Weymouth to demolish the building. Ninety one First Avenue, new garbage bin has been put in place and a proper amount of compost bins have been provided by the town. One forty nine West Street, today I was also talking with the owner of this building. Had sent her a registered letter which she had received, expressed concerns about the property, the grass, the length of the grass. She in turn said she was talking to her realtor and they're trying to work out to have somebody go in there and cut it. If not, she had asked if the town can go in. Like I explained to him before, if she can't afford it, then we would provide contractor or the town to go in and cut it. And then this would be placed on as a lien on taxes at the end of the year. Seventy seven Monique Row, I also had sent a registered letter out to Irvingwell Properties on the twenty fifth of June. I'm still waiting to hear correspondence in regards to that building. Spur, D A S, sadly, Protective Services, all cameras are in full operation. Parking control, there's nothing to report at this time, civic address, three points were added, one civic. Dog control, nothing to report at this time, crossing guards, nothing to report at this time. Solid wage management, nothing to report at this time. Taxi license and no violations have been given in the month of June. It's my report.
What do you mean by civic address, three points were added, does that mean?
Well, one civic address added and the three points to be anything on, they just sent me a note stating that three points were added. So I get a copy from N S C A, saying one civic address and three points added, and it doesn't really give me where it is.
Just identifies the property or something, or?
There was no, didn't, didn't numbers add it to it or not, it's just.
I think it could be, I don't know for sure, but I, it could be segregation points that be in relationship to that new civic number.
It could be, but I, they didn't give me, when they sent their report to me, it's very little on it. It just says three points, one civic address added. I know the civic addresses that have been added, but I just don't know exactly where the points are.
The garbage situation down at Carlton and Birch has been good the last few days. Any questions for?
Just to, also to add to that, marriage is to let you know that I will have, there will be a gentleman coming down from Farrow with N S C A and he's gonna give me more pointers and go over more things with me, because the system has changed, so. A little bit of training.
On the nine, on the nine one one, civic nine one.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's easy. Correspondence, we just sent a little note up there thanking us for our contribution. It was nice of them. And it was a little note. And new business, visitor information center, Shore, I added that, is we're, we're getting close to having completion. So it's time to start thinking about ideas, what direction we want to go in. We have, we have that building, we have the land to the, to the north, which is quite a lot. So what do we want to do? We want to use it for ourselves, I have a dream, but that's just a dream. Do we want to lease it out, do we want to sell it, do we want to, you know, think about ideas? Or do you want to prepare expressive of interest for the building, put it up there and see what people come back with? I like to see benefit the community, not so, not so much like I was approached, could I put a restaurant in there or could I do this? Well, I think the last thing we need is, we have, well, we totaled up the good and the other, we added one more, so thirty one places to be. So I like to see you use something that would benefit the community long term. I don't know exactly what that is, but we need some ideas now to start recovering our money. Their Board of Trade, Digby or Tours had went and looked at it and they're gonna submit a proposal to Tom at some point. But I told them that this wasn't going to be subsidized by the town, it was gonna be, we've got, you know, we got some money invested in that property now, so we need to recover our money. No response from the clients, they were looking at it one time?
I think they moved on.
Yeah.
I think they bought a piece behind them, I think that's probably.
Yeah, they bought all that.
I never, never heard anything back from, once they viewed the site, that, that, nothing back.
Wouldn't hurt to put something up. Wrap something up and put it up for proposals. Yeah, but in there, what do we want to drag out of people? This is a thousand square feet, I think we discussed the other day.
It's almost over right there.
Yeah. And about maybe half of it is showroom. There's boardroom, washrooms, something that could be used as a kitchenette or whatever, storage.
Yes, ten hundred and seventy five square feet.
Yeah, okay.
And there's a back room that's nine by sixteen. Bathrooms are forty one, or four, four and a half feet by eleven. Storage room is ten and a half feet by seven. The main room is the front, there's twenty four by twenty nine. Kitchen area is ten and a half by eight and the back entry electrical room is eight and a half by eight, so.
My, my dream around was, most of us heard about the Bay of Funny Experience Center, that was, the, it was gonna walk it down the islands. And that didn't happen. So there was a group formed locally in town that I, I sat on, but that, those plans exploded to a sixteen million dollar facility. That was presented to the province and the province come back and said, that's sixty million dollars. Obviously, they said, we, we, they had just experienced the Joggin's Museum, where the consultant said that was gonna attract twenty, or two thousand people a year. This is five or six years ago now, and it was attracting twenty thousand people here. So they felt that they got, things didn't go away, the province thought it was gonna go, and then the province wanted it there. I got, the only thing I say to myself, when it's raining in Digby, what do our tours do? There's nothing for them to do, well, eat and go warmer. Nothing wrong with any of those choices, but there's no place, you know, we have the Admiral Digby Museum, which is nice, but it doesn't cover all the genres. Anyway, that's, we don't need to make a decision, I know, we need to start thinking about what we want to do to that property. We could sell it, have a one-time cash infusion, and then it's gone, where we can make a profit off of it. Anybody got thoughts? We'll suggest it, maybe it might be a spot where you come off the ferry, might have other things in it, but you could have wine tasting, beer tasting, or an entry point for that kind of stuff. With some other people. And had, we, when we first bought, we had Paul's book selling the land next to it, which is, if you walk up, you can still walk up the road. Peter, remember Legion, you probably remember Legion, it was a road up there, it's grown up, it was spectacular piece of land up there, the view was just amazing, but. Need some other ideas.
You rent? Is that the you rent?
Idea, yeah, it's, 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 might be cool, because the ceiling is just planks, but that's not impossible, yeah.
You could insulate that, put polyomere or something.
Yeah, easy.
Heat and stuff, so.
Yeah, easy, but yeah, something year round would be ideal. The Board of Trade and Data, they need, they need office space, so they don't have a permanent home, they just shuffle from one place to another, so.
Be expressive of arms.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I stressed to them that this wasn't going to be subsidized by the town. We, we had that already, we have the fire hall upstairs and we have the Digby Station and those kind of things that people rent for fifty bucks or whatever. Cost more to turn the lights on for fifty bucks.
Might not hurt to put out the expression of interest for folks, put out for thirty or sixty days. Obviously, no guarantees in terms of what comes in, we're not even necessarily gonna hack on whatever is, you know, added to us. Put, put in a little bit of information in terms of what we're looking for, for that, particularly for the expression of interest that maybe we're gonna hold it to maintain and be a landlord, give them either a one or two year term to start. And from there, you know, that can work continually, but looking at the, you know, the Board of Trade and Data approaching us, they can be part of that.
Yeah, that would be.
And it might bring up some ideas from, from some folks as to what we could do with the property, what we could do or they could do. And it doesn't mean that we couldn't at the same time approach the government about getting funded. We're turning it into something that's more of a experience and, you know, sentimental, it might just buy us time to, to reach out to them. Because if no better and more productive idea comes through, then maybe we do look at, at, you know, proceeding with it. But obviously with the, you know, addition that we, we need funding from the provincial government to make it happen. Because, because that actually is, is a good point and a good idea to have something like that there. So I, I'd be fully open to exploring that as well. Just, let, let's see if there's anything else that's out there that someone's sitting on that they're just waiting for, you know, a reasonable purchase.
I, a year, two years ago, the former co-officer, Rhonda, Rhonda Lambert now, I brought that up, that property, what we were looking at trying to buy in regards to B O P X or something like that, and she said they would be very interested in something like that. I said it might be several hundred thousand dollars, I have no idea. She said, we would be interested in a project like that, not, not a sixteen million dollar project down here in the water. Yeah, they were, yes, Paul can think about how expressive interest, interest would look and get that out there. Anybody else has an idea, council staff, so.
Is that report anywhere that you can get it?
Yeah, it is, and I can get a copy, what I'll do is I'll send it out to everybody.
Yeah, because you might be able to do something there, it's already been done, just gotta reduce it a bit, right?
Yeah, yeah, well.
You could, what? Yeah, oh, I know, but theirs was on the water the whole time, Eric, but at least you can get some concept from it, right?
Yeah, that, that report, that, that one there for here had a title tower last time. You have no idea, but, but it just wasn't.
It would be nice to get something there that's twelve months of the year and not just five weeks.
Well, the other keep back in your mind is, right next door, you may have an operation that might be running like ten, ten months of the year. So there might be an advantage to having that facility and ours side by side too, yeah.
Because when it rains, people stay, the vines need something to do too.
Well, exactly, you know, they, but it's always been my, you see a family of visitors walking down the street on a rainy day. Nothing really to hold, you need to hold.
Well, and to add to, if we end up keeping it and doing something with it, I believe, Paul, you had mentioned this before, where, you know, up in the city in a couple of different spots, four are farmers markets and those, those spots, they have little, you know. Yeah, little fisherman's village. And, you know, let's say if it's something where we end up using the property, we could put that out there for folks where, makes it a little more friendly for when it is raining, so that they can be somewhere. I mean, we've got a relatively. I mean, we've got a relatively successful farmer's market downtown that's operating now, but those tents aren't the most fun when it's, when it's raining outside.
No, you, you go to a lot of the towns in Calabai and Lunenburg and all those places, all fishing towns, and they have lots of things for tourists to do. You come here and you have large lots of big, large scallops, but.
Care to see a scallop?
Yeah, you can't see a scallop. And walking down to the wharf is, when it's really busy, it gets closed off now. And don't, I don't be surprised if someday it's going to get closed off just because of the liability. Last year, they had a child tow their rental, unfortunately, just scared everybody. But someday you may see that. Anyway, you have to think about ideas and we, Tom can work on expressive interest sometime. We'll get that out. It's a view of the property. Town in the Digby capital budget. We'll get to yours, Paul, in a bit, but. So the staff prepared a capital budget. Some of this stuff we've seen before, some of this has been changed. What's the top with that? Paul, Ed, Matt?
Talk about it.
Okay, so this is our, both our capital budgets, which is year one for the town, which is what you would be approving at, at council. And the ten-year outlook, which makes up the capital investment plan, something that the council has to pass every year. You're not, you're not passing the spending for any of the other years. You have to approve the capital investment plan, which is effectively what this entire document is, including the water commission portion. Like you say, what council would be passing is the town portion and year one. So I'll just go through basically project by project or line by line fairly quickly. And just feel free to jump in and stop me, ask questions, and we'll go from there. So we'll just start right at the top. So the town hall renovation, this has been on the books for a couple of years. This year, surprisingly, we got a call from Akola saying, you know, when I told you your town hall project wouldn't work with the previous grant? They said we may have a grant for you that might work. So someone calling us about money. So, so we've gone forward, put this on the books, said it's completed the application. And hopefully we can get fifty thousand or so funded through Akola. So it's kind of a no-brainer for something that needs to be done, especially, it's all river mainly. Well, I think you guys can correct me, but the windows were one of the key things here. The original windows, they're rotten.
They're rotten and everything?
We have, yeah, we have water, air, everything going. Something that has to be done while you're doing that. That's the time to fix the other deficiencies in the building.
Just a comment to the grant, I know they don't want to give out more than fifty thousand dollars, but ask for more.
I've had multiple conversations with Akola. Ed's had a conversation with Akola. And we, we're trying to maximize what we can get, but we know that there is an ask too much.
There isn't ask too much. I'm not saying ask for a hundred and twenty, but ask for sixty or so.
And that, that fifty thousand was, I've talked to him once.
Yeah.
And that fifty thousand was thrown at me.
And I, yeah, I had multiple emails, talked to him twice.
It's strange that they would talk like that. I've talked with the receivable grants that I've applied for, and that's the only one they've actually thrown the number out. So it's, it's different, trust me, so kind of caught me off guard.
And, and our.
I think it's a free election program.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Election every month.
Oh, check the money wherever we can get it.
And that's why these amount, because they want to be able to spread their dollars around more places, right?
We looked at the, the criteria for the grant, and then actually we have other projects that did this criteria even better. But we were guided in this direction by Akola. So when you get a hand one way, you.
The other projects, I made a phone call to today, so I'll just speak to that at the end.
Okay.
Just get some information.
The January for town hall, that's the one that we've pushed forward a year. It has to be done, but it's something. This is our key spot for, well, for all of our services. When power goes down, we lose a lot of our ability to work. And even though our, this isn't our, our ECC, our Emergency Coordination Center, keep changing the name. This tends to be where EMO congregates for our major events. So that's why that's, but that's not in year one, that's just in year two. The next line, the fire hall, that's put out in year six, just to keep it in mind for everyone. So it's nothing, it's coming up.
Wasn't there an announcement this week or last week? For its funding and a light for fire halls, or is there anything that we could use?
Yeah, was that the JAP?
I forget what it was, but.
Every.
Emergency, right?
Yeah, there was some fire hall, I guess.
Every three years, we're eligible for, emergency service organizations are eligible for that grant. Ours is eligible this year. And I believe they're looking at it from the last time that I talked to them a couple of times. The fire, the town can't apply. The fire halls or ground search and rescue can't apply. If that's the same grant that I'm thinking of. And they can only access it once every three years. It would be eligible this year, so they've indicated they're aware and hopefully putting an application.
They have to do that.
So the next line, fire hall. So there's various renovations or things needed at the fire hall. The doors, accessibility is driving a lot of this. So the west door up on the backside, that's going to need to be, have a ramp, and it's going to need a power door. The doors on the north side are basically have wind blowing through them. And downstairs in the common areas, a lot of work that we'll be able to do ourselves. I guess if you have more, more detailed questions, Ed can answer that about the, the downstairs upgrades. The next one is the line six is the CCTV system. Bruce has looked into this with Line Secure, our provider, and looked at adding approximately five new cameras. I think primarily you wanted to gather the north and the water street curves down.
Yes.
And I think you actually have something capturing a little bit further south.
It would be, it'd be, for those point, three hundred feet from the furniture store.
Yeah.
Further down.
Because we don't have any.
Captured some of the cannon mags and that, so. Would you just better coverage?
At the north, okay.
You know, cameras tended to stay at this end of town because we had a lot of problems right here. You know, at this end of town. That's why.
Both ends.
There was one at the south end as well, wasn't there expanding beyond the front?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I meant the original cameras. Because we had a lot of problems with one of the establishments down there. That's why here we're down now, so.
Now it seems like it's up around like where Captain's Cabin is. And then you have the turnoff to go down to the coal there.
Maybe lane and more fire, yeah, those are some.
It also gives the, with the, with this new camera and antennas, it also gives the option to add extra cameras in the future. And also be able to put a, an antenna down, say down past the park, down by.
Down Maiden Lane?
Down Maiden Lane, it was.
Yeah.
Close to the park. So we'd be able to have an antenna there.
There's still a lot of activity at the park. And I'm talking, you know, twelve o'clock and on. Would they work? You know, you always see that joke about sending a high-definition eight thousand K photo from ours. We look at the date on a coin, but they show a camera at a bank and you can't read the nice face.
Yeah.
Will it?
Yep.
Yeah, will they work? You know, that's, I guess, I meant in the darkness, yeah, the park and stuff, yeah.
The ordinary resolution would be better than the ones we have right now.
And so moving into transportation services, the number seven skid steer. There's two skid steers. Simply putting them out in year four and year six. They were on a ten-year cycle of replacement. Again, we're not approving that tonight, but just to keep it on the radar and for financial planning purposes. Same idea with the lawn tractor mower. Those run approximately a ten-year cycle. And then down to the tractor. We have a two thousand and ten Kubota tractor right now. That would be buying one in two thousand and twenty-three, year three, seventy-five thousand. That can be moved again. It's just to keep it on the radar that, you know, it'll be getting, getting fairly old at that point. As we get closer to those projects further out, we reassess as time goes by, as we get closer.
Is there a brand that seems to be wearing better than the rest? We did pretty well with the boat head and haul, and then John Deere, they have had pretty well with boats, so.
The number ten here, Public Works fifteen hundred work truck. Again, that's just looking at replacing the current two thousand and fifteen Ford two fifty. So that'd be, that'd be ten years old, keep it on the radar. And number eleven, downtown sidewalks, this is the major project. And you can see this year, seventy-five thousand dollars included. Again, this is the one that the, there is engineering work done already. The sketch diagrams are done with potential artwork with all the elevations for the sidewalks is, is done. And Ed and Tom probably are more on that. I think we've talked about it before in here, but.
I'll just add, before you move from this, I'll add that I called the mayor to congratulate her because for the second year in a row, they've got a couple of million dollars for the street skate program. They got one point seven million plus their six hundred thousand last week, last Friday. They had another one point seven given to them. So I congratulated her and then I said, Hal? Hal, so she sent an ask the information. They use, they have, which we've talked about, but they have an in-house engineer that does the engineering side of it. So they hired an outside firm. She couldn't tell me the exact name of that outside firm. Did the designing, but also did things like traffic count, wrapped it all around cobit and green and things like that. And that's where that money's come from, all those pieces. So she's going to provide us with the information.
We have been approached by people who write grants. They take a percentage of the grant. So that is certainly a potential for us.
Yeah, the staff did the actual application. They, this firm pulled all the information together, made it easy for them. So, but we don't have the engineering side, but that's a big, a huge advantage.
And, and I, I'm not incorrect, I assume seventy-five thousand in here. I'm not sure whether that'd be more engineering, because I don't think our engineering right now gives us full costing, so we would need to.
Costing, no, it's just the design that's been done. We haven't gone a second to get the pre-design. And so that's roughly to get us to a pre-designed stage with some estimated, cost estimations. That's what we need in order to be grant application ready, right? Because if we just take a guess out of the blue and we're lucky enough that they accept it, we're, we're locked into that, that dollar amount, right? Like if we say like that million that we've got sitting there, that's, that's just our stay in the dark, right? And we put a grant in asking for a sharing on a million dollars and it ends up costing one point five million, then, you know, that five hundred thousand, we could come up with that ourselves, right?
And we may not even have enough detail without the pre-design to do the grant application. So that, that's the key, the key point. To get, to get to that point where we can then, when things come open, we're ready. We're ready to throw the application.
Well, we've been told that by the factory. Have your shovel ready, projects, have them ready, because here comes the money.
But do you still get it? Do you, where you got all your information done, or did it actually come that they might want something?
Well, you never know that. It's always a guess.
Basically, that's one of the key things. We have, one, know if you've got a pre-designed ready, done. And the other one, now, number one, on what, what's your estimated cost? And the other thing that we want to know is what's the commitment that your council has? Have they committed funding or not? And that's why we have to keep it in, in our capital budget, right? So that we can say in an application, yes, council has, has committed funding in their capital investment plan, right? So it's on the radar. So if they, as, they don't like to give out money and then have the time to say, well, to the council of that, right?
Sure.
It's a bag of the face.
Just wondering if we should have, it's probably not a multi-phase project. And really a million dollars, everybody sitting here knows it's not going to touch everything downtown. Just wondering if we should have alternative funding in the, in the following year or two? Because we're not going to do both Lives and Street and Sandy Street in one year. Can't see it, right? So I think that, you know, for future, we should, we should add in year two or year three, some additional money, just putting it up there while we're talking about it, so.
Yeah, we're, we don't get our, our partners to come on board with us and it moves. It just keeps moving it.
Down, down anyway.
Yeah.
It's like our Mount, it's going to be the next one.
Mount Street.
Not, not Street, I mean, you get six hundred thousand. We, we've already got the pre-designed done for Mount Street. We've already got the cost estimates for, for Mount Street. And so we're already, we're just waiting for them to, and that's a program that we can apply for, right? So we're, we're ready. We're not ready for the downtown sidewalks, the same way that we are at Mount Street.
Well, Mount Street's what, been two years, three years that we've been waiting for?
For that. And I'm just waiting for, you know, them to make it that.
Oh, the announcement.
Yep.
I've been waiting sixteen years.
Yep.
Yeah, that was frustrating because there was money flowing for a while, and then we got a pre-designed done. And now we haven't seen a drop of, you know, the, the big funding, the ICIP, the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Fund. So I, I will, in year three, just for the downtown sidewalks, I just added a million dollars, just keying in a number. Just to let you know, I added that. We end up passing this as the CIP. The next line, Mount Street upgrade, that's, like you said, we just talked about it, been on the books for a number of years. We have the engineering, mostly engineering done, certainly it'd be more than the pre-design. We're ready to go when a grant falls open. Taking it on ourselves, that's another question. Probably not something we want to, to do. We don't usually do projects that big with external funding. Church Street, Church Street is in the same situation of Mount Street, only a few years behind. The twenty thousand is to get us to the point where we can do our pre-design. And then the six hundred thousand is to do the actual work itself. And that's been moved forward year after year in looking at that. And that's the, I guess, the western end of Church Street, King Street, the Victoria. Next line is King Street. Same idea, the engineering again this year, get that done. Then it's ready for the grants when they open up. And King Street, we'd also be looking at doing virtual water commission because we've had water breaks in that, that line, corner of King and Carlton. And even up a little further up the hill on King near Prince William. So something has to be done at, at some point.
Are they going to get patched?
Yeah.
We wait for that sewer again. Now the sewer again, so.
Next line is, yes, the King Street sidewalk in Stormbury. So that is King Street, very north end of it, from Carlton going down to Racket. I think Ed has realized that they're tired of filling a hole every year and potentially somebody breaking their leg in it and.
If you're telling, have a heavier ring, we're down there filling holes that big, that deep. And it's just, just tell them just to do it, because somebody is going to get hurt, so.
We want, we wanted to do it all together with the project. We just talked about above. Be nice to do everything, rip everything apart at once, but it's at the point where that has to be done. Okay, the next line is the Armor Rock for the Racket Road. We have pre-designed done and grant application in, that's the FRIP, that one, right? Yeah. So we're hoping, it certainly meets our eligibility requirement. And we've got the photos of the flooding and the damage that's been caused over the years. So we're hoping that we can get that done with, with funding from FRIP, flood rate.
How much do they contribute?
It was fifty-fifty, I think it came to ninety-eight-five each. Uh, it's fifty fifty, I think it came to ninety-eight five each, so.
They, they consider it kind, apparently, I suppose? Or did?
No.
I just.
There was no in-kind. It has, and it has to be tendered, that's how it works, so. It's weird, but that one, anyway, not for me to talk about.
No, it's probably. I have environment set there too. That's the problem with some of those, and, or most of those, I think, extractive programs is that we can't do a lot of these that are in-house because they won't recognize, they want everything done by contract. And that's the only key to get, to keep the economy going, right? And spread the money out. And it's unfortunately costs us more. So that's, uh, the thing is, we can do it, if we can do a project in-house, we've got to fund it a hundred percent.
Yeah.
We follow the rules of the game and you can get up to two-thirds, two-quarters funded on some of the programs. It's a shame because we are more than capable of a lot of these projects to do in-house.
Yeah. Well, I didn't care, but that's what they do to us, so.
Okay, the next one, number seventeen, sidewalk construction, that's, uh, in front of the campground. So you've seen work done above the campground, the work done below the campground. This is finishing in between, so the driveway will be defined and the water will be, uh, directed appropriately. And the next one is the Sec Second Avenue expansions, St Mary's, St George, that's the south end of Second Avenue. Um, and, uh, we're, this is continuing on from, from prior years. Uh, so, uh, I think Ed had talked about this before as well. Uh, so there's a lot of work to be done there, hopefully in-house. I don't think we're, I don't think there's anything that we can't do in-house on that one, is there?
We're doing pretty well, everything. We have hired a contractor to help us with the, the machinery because we need a big piece of gear.
Is the development still hit? Do you know any word on the development? I haven't heard, there's development there.
I'm starting to hear.
I just care, I mean, I, I think they're still.
That's a driving part of this too, is that.
I think they're waiting for film supplies to. Get table eyes, expect a drop maybe.
And the next line is the same piece of Second Avenue, it's just potentially paving it year five, that's in the year twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, again, just throwing it out there, we're not approving it, just keeping in mind that, uh, you know, as development occurs, that requests will be, will be coming. And the next line is highlighted in yellow because I think that's changed since, uh, yeah, since we issued this document. Um, yeah, so I'm always on a current version, we're looking online. This is Second Avenue expansion, church to, to Mount. Uh, this is just the overall works and costs that had to be done to, to finish that, that up. That's the north, north end of Second Avenue, it's finished up, ninety-two hundred dollars. Uh, is everybody on that same version? Does everybody have that nine thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have two.
Okay. Uh, line twenty-one, St George Street expansion, uh, Queen to King. Uh, in Second Avenue, that portion joint with the water commission, fifty thousand. So again, it's all tied into the same development, uh, Second Avenue in the south end. A lot of that work, uh, being done in-house. And then the next line is, uh, pave St George Street, Queen to Second. Um, and that's year five. Uh, again, just a rough estimate of what it will take to, uh, to pave that street. And next line, uh, two sets, solar power crosswalk signs, uh, council's already approved that, that twenty thousand, uh, in the meeting previously, so they can get ordered. The next line, road front, fronting culverts, uh, we've done that every year, that's been pre-approved. Already approved by council, the May seventeenth committee of the whole was discussing it, passed the council. Uh, the next line, traffic signal lights upgrade, uh, the old traffic signal lights. Um, this is year two of the project, I think we did some work on it last year and this is the remaining work for the seven thousand dollars. And the next one is the Racket Bridge upgrade, twelve thousand dollars. This is, this is the town's fifty percent cost here, may never be built to us, but, uh, shouldn't say that. Hopefully nobody's listening.
Major service.
T I R did work, uh, we're estimating that's fifty percent of the cost, uh, if we, we ever get a bill signed. Episode seventeen, eighteen, bit of the railing was done just last year. The next line, new plow truck, um, that would be looking for a new plow truck next year. By the way, the, our newer plow truck has been acting, I don't know which one you want to replace with that. Um, anyway, that's, we'll have a, we are two thousand, will then be twenty-two years old at that point. So having it in the budget makes sense. Next line, Prince William Street, resurfacing east of Victoria. Uh, this is, uh, mill and, and pave, so this is, uh, um, going from the four-way intersection down to the end of the town lines, or heading down to seventeen. And that would, that would be funded all on our own, well, gas tax or our own money. I, I guess when I say gas tax, we're basically spending our own money because we get the gas tax check no matter what. There's no application, you don't have to do anything special, you get that money. So, so that's, that's out of our, our pocket.
You have to show how it's spent.
Yeah, we just need to show how it's spent.
It can only be spent on approved projects.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like the son of a program.
I mean, it's quite broad now, it used to be very, very tight, but now it's quite broad. Before you couldn't spend gas tax on roads, which was interesting. Now, used to get. So the next line is resurface West Street from St George to St Mary's, uh, forty-five thousand dollars. That would be, um, done out of our own money. And, uh, parallel to that, the next line, resurface Third Avenue from St George to St Mary's. That would cost forty-five thousand dollars, paying that with our one-year gas tax. Um, the next line is sidewalk and curb, corner of Warwick and Money, Money Row. So this is down at the old Irving Station, uh, Warwick Street. And we originally thought we could do something with that this year, but, uh, but it looks like we could be approaching on the, the Irving property. We need to find out more about what's happening with that property. I think Bruce, you've been trying to get in contact with them and find out, uh, actually have a dangerous or unsightly issue there as well. Maybe, uh, from our past experience with Irving, when they hear that there's a mess or a problem with property, they want to get rid of it. Last time we said, clean up your lot, they said, you want to buy it? So we'll see. Um, next line, thirty-two, guard rail, corner of Queen Street and Church Street. Uh, we all brought this one up, uh, just as a steep environment there. Uh, and this would be to, to have that, that character in the install, twelve thousand, seven hundred and two hundred dollars. So moving on to environmental health, um, backup generator on trailer for lift stations. Uh, so when the power goes out, um, our water keeps flowing into people's homes, which means water keeps falling out into the sewer system that our lifts or lift stations can't pump. So we end up bringing in, uh, I don't know, rumors or one of the other people who pump, paying them to, uh, run a truck around town, pumping out all the lift stations. Ed, you can add more to this, but I assume that's, cost savings is one and another is potential environmental damage if we don't get it done.
So never.
No, we have.
We have one.
One.
Yeah, so that, that, all we have is actually the water commissions. So we changed the plug on it, so we heated on lift stations. So, uh, all the new lift stations we put in are equipped with generator plugs, all the old lift stations never had them. So as we move forward, changing our panels, we put the, the plugs on too, so.
And number thirty-four, skater upgrade at Queen Street Water, uh, the computer broke. I believe we've ordered the new computer, it just has to be done. This is a, this is a necessary, this is a no option, uh, three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Number thirty-five, uh, new roof garage and office building, Queen Street at wastewater pumping station. Um, and I think Ed, you mentioned you were getting quotes in your report earlier today.
I called for three quotes and I received two, so.
Okay, and the next one is new generator for the wastewater treatment plant, um, for the UV disinfection case of, uh, power outage. We can't discharge unless we can run the UV.
We, does the district share that with us? Is that our?
Much share.
Much share.
Uh, fifty percent.
Fifty percent, much share.
Yeah, I guess I should mention as well, any of the backup generators, the skater repair, the new, well, not the new rooms, that's not part of the system, but the sewage, um, collection system in, in force means the municipality flows come through it before it goes to Smiths Cove. So we recover thirty-five percent of our costs from the municipality on those items. Uh, so for example, um, if Lighthouse Road outside of town sewer flows in, it has to flow through our lift station. So they share thirty-five percent of the cost. Uh, if it flows in from the industrial park, which is out of town, uh, has to flow through our lift station. So again, they pay thirty-five percent of all that, that cost. Okay, next section, environmental development, this is number thirty-seven, uh, town to D B Highway one-on-one sign, five thousand dollars. We just, uh, don't have a bill for it. So hopefully we never get that bill, not that we need to budget for it. Sign is up. Uh, next one, thirty-eight, public boat launch, um, a hundred thousand, in year two, because we, we decided for, for this year. And, uh, uh, so, but it definitely has to be, be kept in mind. It's something that's been, been on the budget for quite a few years now.
Is there still a group working on that and?
Yeah, 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 I, I spoke to, well, a bit of a month ago, a little bit, got an idea. Now, the, the positive thing is, is federal government has been giving money out recently to PREDEP, so they're looking into that. PREDEP just got some money for public boat launch.
Uh, promenade artwork, uh, fifteen thousand dollars budgeted for, for when that becomes available. I think you're wanting to see appropriate place for that.
Close.
And, uh.
There's a few beers.
Number forty, rail trail upgrade, um, various upgrades to the trail surface, uh, including signage throughout the trail. And, uh, I don't think this year we've disbanded any grant, no, that's just our capital reserves. And we have grants in the past for rail. Five-part benches, uh, I believe a lot of that is the popularity of the benches, the fact that people are sponsoring the benches. So we need to put five more in there and I think we have the bases already down for some of them, don't we?
Yes. Five benches. I think, I don't work less, but they all spoke before for them.
At least, I know at least three of them are, we've already got money for, for the benches, so. Some of the, the plaques, right?
Yeah.
Could be another one or two.
Yeah.
I spoke to Lucy, but when I hadn't paid for it yet, but I, I do want on there, so.
I think that would have been included in the five. Any that we had potential, knew that there was something coming, but there is three definitely that's already been, been sold.
Yeah. And the next two lines, so the green space upgrade for Fisherman's Park and the green space upgrade for Moila Cemetery. Uh, those items were already, uh, pre-approved, the May seventeenth committee of the whole was looked at and then later passed by council. Uh, so Public Works could get going on them. Forty-four, the rack, uh, Luxo Fountain, five thousand dollars. Um, I don't think that was in the original draft of the budget that's posted up on the cloud, but, uh, yeah, we made sure we got that, that in, just an oversight. So the electrical service, uh, uh, would, uh, would be fairly expensive then. It would actually provide a little extra capacity if anything else gets added on. Uh, the next one was the solar lights at the dog park. Um, and that's left, uh, we didn't know, uh, in a mount or, or for sure, uh, well, that's what. I guess I'm sure looking for guidance up from council, what, or maybe, well, if you're going to get in there.
Yeah, we're going to come back to that. We, we want to get our capital budget approved, so we move ahead, we're already in July, we want to talk with a potential other project, so.
Yeah, and that can.
If we make a back and slide that into the.
And that can be done and say, we can fund that from our capital reserve, because that's going to be a small, small amount.
Yeah.
Doesn't affect tax rates, we just, we have reserves. And the next amounts are water, which the water commission will, will pass, but certainly, uh, council is ultimately responsible for, uh, for the activities of, of the water commissions. I certainly should be aware. Um, are we to go through each one line by line or?
Some directly affected.
I'm sure. Okay, so the upgrade to the well roads, um, uh, upgrade well road number five at Castle Lake, access road to the reservoir Dan, um, that was pre-approved by D B Water Commission, uh, previously. Anyway, so twenty thousand dollars, a lot of that not in-house, uh, not all. Uh, well, number four, land purchase, um, I think that's been discussed a number of times at the, uh, the, uh, Water Commission. Um, is it forty thousand plus legal?
Yeah, so something in that over.
Oh, there is well number four.
You know, they, uh, maybe our, maybe our station is, uh, not in town, but they don't, that, whether they're cowards, cross the tall and the needles, break house.
Two carers, like, cross the mailboxes.
Yeah, the mailbox.
Yeah, that's been an ongoing discussion at the Water Commission through, long time, yeah.
So the next one is the hydrants, uh, again, there's nothing specific that has to be done that I, that I know of. We're just, uh, always anticipate that a hydrant will have to be done. I think we've gone up in price, I think we used to budget five thousand, now it's seven. And now down in mains, number four, so, uh, the Mount Street upgrade, this is the Water Commission share of the project that I've spoken about earlier, that the, that the town, uh, would be doing, one that's, uh, designed and, and, uh, application ready. Just waiting for the, uh, the money, the, uh, grant applications to be open. And the next one is the Church Street upgrade. Again, we talked about this, about the town, so this is a partnership with the town. When we do these major projects, they're done together, since it's digging up the streets twice, ten thousand in year one for the engineering and then the project itself year two, two hundred thousand. So the next line is industrial park to Bel Air Drive water main loop completion. Uh, I think this has been on the, the budget for quite a few years. Um, I'm not sure where that, that stands, but, uh, it, uh, it would be an enhancement to the water system as I understand, to get better water flow circulation and no dead ends. Because Bel Air right now, as far as I know, uh, doesn't flow in and out, uh.
It'll become more important when you have a thirteen million dollar plant there. Yeah.
So then just go for it, man, I keep going.
Right into the park, right now the water line goes down to seventeen in the park and then comes out to Tree Street.
Yeah.
But, uh, if there was a major fire in there, it'd be tough to fight, you know, just anyone.
So do we, do we or the car, you were both in this, hold the layer between Bel Air and the, uh?
No, no, that's the thing, we had, um, there's one piece of property that we'll need to buy easement or get an easement with. So that's, that's probably the, that's been a whole lot, trying to determine, something that we do.
And I assume easements aren't free?
No, no. They can, they can be.
Of course they should.
They, 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 they can be and they can be up to, I guess, uh, one of them's thirty, forty thousand dollars a meter. It has to come along, put a cable in the property, so we have the right to do that, we have, we don't, we have the right to do that.
Uh, number seven, King Street engineering, pre-design renewal, um, I was talking about again, it's a convention. This year would be engineering cost and the actual project in the next two years. Uh, the next line, eight, Second Avenue expansion, St Mary's to St George jointly with the town, so that's part of the, uh, the expansion. Yeah, this is, must be the remaining number. We had budgeted some money last year and started on it, and this is the remainder of that budget. So some of that work done this year. Next line, number nine, Second Avenue Expansion Mount to Church, that's this north end. This money actually just a hole over again from the previous year. We did most of the work, sixteen thousand, six hundred has been spent this year already. That money is done and spent. The next line, St. George Street Expansion, Second Avenue to King. And this is with the town as well. And new King Street water main, fronting new house at one eighty King Street, or approximately one eighty King Street. I'm not sure what civic was there, but just north of Prince William Street. That was to get the pipe in the ground before they pave a driveway that we have to dig up. Because eventually there will be a water main going the entire length of Prince William, right down to Racket. So this is the time to get in before paving a driveway. And meters, number twelve, number thirteen, water meters. They add, well generally we add them each year, budget for them. Water services, we have new development, we have a new water service, costs a terrible bit of money, so we budget it to. Oh, sorry, this is not the radar, this is the downtown core projects. We have twenty-five thousand and one hundred thousand. Probably since we added money up above to the town in year three, I'm gonna add another hundred thousand on here. Just to be consistent with, or just zeros. Can match what we do with the town. Okay, line fifteen, replace water stand pipes throughout the system. This is the second or third year, I believe that is, glad to get a number of them done, year three?
Year three.
Yep. It's the, a lot of them, the water stand pipes, if they're original. Chances are you turn them off, they don't turn off, they just break. So they should be repaired or replaced. And number sixteen, water services, that is a number that we sort of put in the budget every year. Because we know there's going to be some development and we'll add up putting in some new water services. And in structures, number seventeen, new entrance and steps to well number five. I believe this was carried forward prior year.
Yes.
The next one, paint the top of the water distribution tank, that's one of the two tanks, I think.
Left tank.
Left tank when you're staying on Sydney.
We do that.
High school students, our new helper, our new helper.
One of those was painted like not too many years ago.
Before I came, so. How long ago was it? How long you been here? Almost, well, six, over six years.
Actually, it would have been much more than eight years.
Number seventeen, is that, does he have a stairway to Heaven Bear for eighteen thousand?
What you have to do, we have to put a complete hole outside entrance. Dig, dig, it's like putting a basement. And that's like.
Oh, so is there cement, is there ready or?
No, it's cement work and everything, hatch cover, the whole thing. So it's designed to, you open it up, same as, you have some dogs on your basement and you can walk down the steps, right here?
Apparently always hay, you just sit stairs.
Because right now you have basically a confined space, like the hatch, it's a manageable cover.
Cover liner.
Yep. And that's where the well is, so. So you have to have two people who will get past it.
Well five is a school host room?
Yeah. And number nineteen, the new well, that's been in the budget for a number of years. I don't know whether that's, that's gotta go forward. I think the water plant, sorry, the fish plant, which they need water, the fish plant put in their own well.
That's why it's there, because if we do get a big development, we're gonna be, we're gonna be forced to drill another well.
Yeah, we don't, we don't keep our hands tied if we get a big development.
Keep kicking it down, right?
Yeah, and that sort of brings me to the next point of the total budget here, grand total, two million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. In all the years I've been here, we've never come close to spending the full budget. The idea is to make sure it's in there, the grant becomes available, we need to throw in an application. Is it a priority? Yes, it's a priority, it's already passed, it's argued in our budget for two years. So we certainly don't look at it as a blank check. Oh, there's, you know, we've only spent one point one million, there's another million dollars left, let's spend it. That's definitely not the way it's looked at. So each item above, I expanded this spreadsheet to be too big to fit on all the newspaper. Because basically each one of them is funded individually, all broken down. And the summary of what they're, how they're funded comes from, is shown below here. So capital reserves, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred. Gas tax reserve, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Capital revenue, that's basically our labor that we put into the capital project, thirteen thousand. Municipal finance corp, that would be the ventures, eight hundred and seventy thousand. And that's for the large projects right now. So Mount Street is a big part, the biggest single part of that, that eight hundred and seventy thousand. Heritage and culture accessibility, eleven thousand. I can't remember specifically which ones, is that Fire Hall?
Oh, that's what it'd be, all that doors, yeah.
And trip, flood risk infrastructure program, one hundred thousand, that would be fifty percent of the racket. Erosion controls are her own. COA, fifty thousand, that's on the town hall project, we spoke about earlier. And municipality in D.B., thirty-two thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. And anything in town that we're doing with the sewer system or the sewer transmission or, or collection system, that'd be there thirty-five percent. And anything we do over at, in Smiths Cove, they're fifty percent funder. So the work we do over there is, they're funding fifty percent of it. And anything the water is doing is being funded from the depreciation reserve, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand. And so the total funding goes here at two point five million, same as the grand total of the total projects. And below that, simply look at our reserves, look at our opening balances, look at the agent spending, note of it, and the projected ending reserves. Again, I haven't seen us spend the whole thing, but even if we did spend everything in this budget, we're able to fund it in this manner. And those reserves levels still leave us with green financial condition indicators. So we still have enough reserves to give us a green, a lot of confidence, our reasonable reserves. They are, although they look low. When we look at capital reserves, when the province looks at capital reserves, and probably we should too, is we look at our total operating reserves and our total capital reserves, and that's really what you've got available for. We've got a lot in the operating reserve, it'll look like two million. So, so we're fine that way. And again, it's very unlikely we're going to spend that much money. And that's all of the detail, so I guess question?
Well, how big can a gas tax reserve be before they say, where are you guys going?
There is, there's never been any, any issue with that, that we know, that I've heard of. I've heard rural municipal units saying we can't find enough projects to spend our gas tax on.
Yeah, for Paul Will, there's this one that, the great rural is so well, everything here, roads, water, so.
That's not using any gas tax from Mount Street, which is the big project.
They don't have that, and they pay us more for our roads. Comments, questions?
Just with the number two, the generator return call for eighty-five thousand dollars. That has technology had to look, I don't, key would be a whole other issue. So we're going for the battery bank for the building here?
We talked about it.
This roof doesn't face the ideal direction for the solar grounds? Yeah, location is, is key, yeah.
Yeah, you're north of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have other buildings that, if you took a quick pill that way.
Public works main building gets ready for a roof, that's key, that's prime real estate.
The, where the rake is, is a really good real estate too. But then they just text the roof again because it was like an off-year rate, so.
Other comments or questions?
When does the Water Commission talk about all this money that we're?
Some of the, yeah, some of we need to talk about. Yeah, don't forget, like as Matt said, some of this money is Water Commission money, they'll spend it. But ultimately the town is responsible. We just have to, in our CIP, we have to include water expenditures. To answer your question, it could be tomorrow.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering.
We never set back because we didn't know where we were gonna be at that time, given the time. Well, we can easily afford it, you know, the monthly payments, doesn't affect your tax rate, that's how we try to look at it, in a nutshell. These are priorities that have been identified by staff, and we got another project, what we can do. We want to get this approved, we may add something to it. Well, we approve year one, year two. We're already halfway through year one almost, so. Yeah, two million, yeah, the operating.
Mentioned that the, so the debt that we'd be borrowing right now, I think twenty, twenty twenty, year ended, March reverse twenty twenty, our debt peaked at nearly two million. March reverse twenty twenty-one, I think our outstanding debt was about one point seven million, one point six, yeah, one point six million. The debt service ratio were quite low, we're always well in the green for what they consider reasonable. Four point five percent of our own source revenue goes towards debt servicing. It's, you need fifteen percent of your own source revenues to be spent on debt before you get sent to the principal's office.
This is our overseers in the hollies. They monitor this, and they give us stickers, green, yellow, red.
Green is up to ten percent of your own source revenues being spent on debt, debt interest and principal. Right now, we're at four point five percent. If we don't borrow this year, it'll be lower, if we do borrow, it might go slightly higher. But well within the ten, we'll still be green.
I don't know if they have a fourth color or not, and that's when they come to the door. They're taking.
And the glue, like.
Their credit card is. Yeah. No, any other comments on, any thoughts?
Isn't it possible back to add a column after your brief project description, just whether or not there's been polluted area or? Just a little checkmark?
Whether there's been.
Most of the projects at South Street, you're willing to work on that already.
Has there been pre-design, that sort of thing?
Yeah.
Probably it's best if I added in the project description, like I said, the spreadsheet's already huge, because you saw when I expanded it. Yeah, I probably can add a little more in the description, you know. Thought I tried to do that with the. Yeah, for example, number twelve, Mount Street, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it says engineering design, so that was done, twenty twenty-two construction. So yeah, I just try to be more diligent. And the next one, Church Street, this year, so I'll try to carry as much of that forward as I can.
Yeah, because we can revisit this time to time to see where are you at. Like a lot of the major stuff, we'll know where we're at because we'll see it, we'll hear, we'll hear about it, but some of them. Any other comments? If that's the case, can we have a motion to approve the year, work of year one? Recommend the council, recommend the council, which can be right after this meeting?
I'll make a motion that we recommend, or recommend the council to year one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it, comments?
Do we have a, where we're talking about those solar lights at the dog park?
We're gonna talk about that here first, yeah, that's year H five. Well, yeah, because there's a lot of discussion around it at the beginning of this year, so. That's why you're H five, yeah. And we can amend this, like we said, H five. Before we. Okay, all right, well, there's H five, the H's park, it's called. Well, agreed to that. Okay, all those, your favorite motion, see, I? Who needs, I got counsel.
So this is gonna be called Loser's Park?
Coastal Protection Action, that's for coastal protection, coastal erosion was our number one item, our charity. I've reached out to, yeah, no, I didn't put that, do you know that tone right there? I'll bring it up. Coastal action. Did anyone do it right? No, I did, okay, okay, good. So all I'm telling you is, reached out to the group, they haven't confirmed any time, this is so short. Doesn't see anybody on this side of the Bay of Fundy, I guess we're not as worried about some coastal erosion as they are down there. But you've got that email, if you haven't looked at it, read it, it's directly involved in what we've been talking about. You have a choice of days and times. So sign up, did you get it?
Yes.
Okay. Truly, it's put on by, it's well, college group, municipal, those departments. You know, make sure that you get it, it's, they do it two o'clock in the afternoon, I think, was it this Wednesday or next week? Anyway, we'll get it to you, have a look, choose a timing, sign it, and listen to the discussion. Southwest, Nova Scotia, affordable housing. So I'm, it says they want to build a street six hundred, nine hundred acres. And they said with a year.
We has the Southwest, I mean, there was, the group set up. Dash, Choice Housing Committee, South Shelburne County Housing Coalition. All kind of got dumped, are the Tri-City Women's Centers Chair, Trish. When the Department of Housing pulled back because of COVID, stopped leading the chair, a lot of those meetings. That meant that a lot of those groups were not doing things that were necessarily in their wheelhouse. And what we started to see was real loss of traction for any sort of topic that was going on because there was no leadership. There was no sort of vision for any of that at all. So we started to talk about how to reorganize that massive group and all of those little groups underneath that umbrella. And we had a small group, the, Trish, myself, and a fellow from the Department of Housing. And we basically clicked into the conclusion that a couple of things has to happen. We have to have three smaller groups in each county to spearhead initiatives in those counties or in those towns. And those would feed to the larger group, and it would basically be run by volunteers. So we, in that vein, are Nigby groups, splintered off and said. And it would basically be run by volunteers, so we, in that vein, our N G B groups splintered off and said, okay, well, let's sit down and talk about it. So we had a chat, uh, myself, Don Thomas, uh, Suzanne White, uh, McCullough, uh, and, uh. And what was it, Nancy Robinson from Bear River, who was a wonderful volunteer, who stepped up to chair and sort of facilitate, however they're going to bet things. So what we came up with from that meeting was to go forward and reach out to as many people in the old Dash group as we could. Uh, 'cause this is coming Thursday, and what we want to do is basically form a partnership, so we want to form, uh. A foundation, basically, which has charitable staffs, and the goal, end goal would be is this group would be responsible for fundraising. For doing grant applications with, whether it was in town or with the municipality, depending on where the project was going to be located. They would administer them, they would run the development, they, they would do all those things that we are missing blocks for. That's the goal, that's what has a bond. Now, the only question is, do we want a permanent seat at that table for our council? And how, I asked Matt a couple of questions, I wasn't sure how it would work if it was a capital expenditure process. Uh, how we, that money would work if we didn't actually, like, the hospital, we didn't actually, oh, we were a partner, right?
Your question was more about, uh, giving charitable receipts for fundraising. Yeah, so the way I understood it, though, this entity that you're talking about right now is going to obtain charitable status itself. So probably they can issue all the receipts, I think, I think that covers it.
We, we had a discussion, envision that the money, if it was a fundraiser, it would be that foundation during the fundraising.
Right.
And then if we had a project in, on Queen Street in D B, that that money would move from the foundation to the town of D B. To do that project, or to go with, uh, any kind of grant, or anything like that.
That, that's just a couple of comments, but it's, I agree, we need to splinter that group up, we had a small group. Then it became Dash, and then Dash got bigger, Dash got bigger, and it became Tri-County, and it just, it was too big. But the other comment is, you talk about money flowing from foundation to the town to get involved in the project, that's a bigger discussion. But I agree with you on a local.
Yeah.
More focused group.
Yeah, so we're kind of processing down with that group that we're about to send out the invitation to, you know, interested in, meet somebody who's. Early in profession, somebody in accounting, somebody in, you know, whatever field, we could find some talent, uh, to sort of come together, get that off the ground.
Yeah, it's important to get something in front of the product, uh, now.
Well, that's, and that was the other thing we talked about too, I mean, the moon and the sun and the stars are all laundry, now, if you could use this time while they left us on. To get your ducks in a row, and discuss your project, and figure out what your assessment needs is, and, and do all that homework. So that when they come out, you could either go after the parties and say, are you, if you get elected, committed to spending that twenty-five million dollars that the Liberals committed to you? And the Liberals committed to spending it the way that we think they're going to spend it, right? Like, they've got five hundred thousand dollars at the right now for their assessment, no one even touch it, there's, there's, there's no avenue to get that money to actually get anything done. But we've got a lot of that information, completed on Dash, did some wonderful work, and that's all still on your website, but we could easily, we already started the update process of that information. Yeah.
From, from the Dallas, we always had a rep there.
Yes.
And municipality had a rep there, not so much a member of the board.
Yeah.
Right into conflict issues, but we always, we should have a voice there, or a listen there.
That's what I wanted to know for council, what, what they would like to do.
Just made a comment, I noticed you, you referenced Compass, um, I didn't go through and, uh, read the, um. Act of Co-op Housing in, in Nova Scotia, and how, wondered how you would ever do this. Compass seems to be the umbrella group that helps all the co-ops throughout Nova Scotia get this up, it's not like they're a great resource. I'm just wondering if, if council could benefit from a presentation from Compass, or, and/or a presentation from the Ananish Affordable Housing Society. Just say, tell us what you're model.
I'd sooner get one from Ananish, because the Compass groups, everyone's bad at Compass right now, because they seem to be overstretched. And they, they, right, right in school is the example, right, because they're doing some of the other things right now, and they're a very small group. They didn't wonder if it worked, but I drove by that place the other day and pulled in, uh, it, it's another one of these buildings that is lucky we don't have, we just smashed out of it already, and, you know, nothing's gone on.
Compass is involved, a snip, in the big project, hell, I.
Yeah.
I asked why there hasn't been any movement down here, they just said they can focus on that big project, hell, I, and then they'll start looking back at rural areas. But the Ananish group might, more we know about it, it's an invitation.
And we're kind of the first stop on the way, we haven't talked to the Caribbean at all.
But you're passionate about it, so congratulations.
Well, I don't like to talk.
Yeah, 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 but it's, but this is the time, because they're in the, well, the Liberals have spoken about it, and I think I heard the N G P speak about it, I haven't heard anything from Conservatives, I don't know if my else has. I haven't, and I, I brought it up with the Liberal candidate. Last week, I had lunch with him, just brought up, he said, what are, what are, what are your issues? Well, I said, affordable housing is number one, he said, yes, and that's when we had a discussion about Compass, 'cause he was involved in that project. Comments, thoughts, are there any on it? I, 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 we do need a focus group here, you look at the invitation for the meeting this Thursday, there's sixty of them. You can't get anything done with sixty of them. You know, in the last, you know, will we be contributing to funding, uh, in any way, so that's another thing that would have to be done.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I think Peter, just 'cause we talked a lot about that too, and I sort of pushed my opinion that it would be our, like, project by project. Basically, it would not be like senior safety, where you, our spending money every year, but just support.
Yeah, yeah, you know, recognizing is provincial responsibility.
Yeah.
Do you start talking to the broads that you're gonna step in and take that over, they're just gonna walk away after you?
See you later, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Well, one of our most grants, you have to have so much of.
Any else on it? So, we, we'll let you continue on with the, the no financial commitment, or any of the backups. It's worked, but I, I think we all agree that a focus group can be useful.
Absolutely.
'Cause it just fell apart.
Yeah, and we all kind of realized that if you want something done, you're gonna have to.
Yeah, yeah, sort of, yeah. The, so, comments, advice? Now, I just, while I, I thought of it, just to go back a step to the coastal protection. I realized that, uh, the email of the date, that was not sent.
Oh, okay, we'll get that.
I just sent, I just sent it out. I just forwarded it to everybody, so, so that you'll, you'll have the dates, and that's all. Yeah, I can, yeah. Yep, so that's, that's, uh, that's from the, uh, climate change and Department of Environment, so it's, it's, uh. Where it's our number one, try to get yourself in. Sign up and listen to what's, the conversation is, so. And then hopefully, we'll have some of the people standing in front of us. 'Cause then we have racket, we have trail down there, we have infrastructure that's getting close.
Yep.
And that's a massive part of it.
Going there by larches, you know, a couple of them trees go, that's gone, incredibly, so, if you look at the trees, they're splitting now.
Yeah.
So it's, it's starting to pull the trees down, so. The worth about it, it's like art, right? That, that, every beach, every cove has changed, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and there was a diary today that's moving, the coastal erosion waters moving fast, and they predicted. They said by two thousand thirty something, we're gonna see some flooding in Canada. Okay. Moving on, the H's Park, in front of. The H's Park, just an idea, some of these, you saw that, I don't know what I did with, some of these ideas we, we tossed around.
I just, because we talked, we'll talk about the length of Dog Park at, maybe, at the top. It's kind of piecemeal, that we're part of, it was no overall vision, so that's why I kind of put it together with Mr. Ayers, that, uh, you know, we were talking about, you see, uh. Sixty unit, uh, or what?
You can put something up there.
Sure, so basically, uh, four phases, and I broke down phase one into most of the things that we could do ourselves that would not require a great deal of capital expenditure anyway, but just be bare power of a few more things. Uh, so I didn't know if there was an existing survey done or occurred once, that's probably important to get that done anyway. And could be, up to that one, which is a great point, uh, excavation of the site, uh, if we build strews. Sort of air, or, or feasible facility, uh, basically, it's, uh, the arch would basically take a lot of that field out to get the slope of the hill to be an amphitheater seat, just as, as sort of a grassy knoll. And that could be used to level up the outside perimeter to make that walking trail completely up. That's basically what I was talking about there. Um, slope assist grow, before the national hill from the Ericson exceeded, yeah, with theaters heating, uh, reconstructing its existing drain, drainage system or ditch, there's something there in the middle of that. We'll have to rejig around or figure out what's gonna be done with it or whatnot.
That was part of the old foundation they tore up.
It could extend, if you need to be, 'cause it is off to the, sort of, saw it off.
There might be some things left there, but they were pretty good, too.
Reforming, according to reinforce and rebar structure, uh, to put a plug at the center, so you can actually have. My idea would be to pour that as flat as you could get it with the drainer, that it could be stopped, and then an outer lip that had a half inch edge. So basically, if it was open, it would be half inch wide and it sat there, so in the winter time, freeze throw, freeze thaw, give it freeze, and be able to scare if the wind was, was cold enough, wouldn't have to be that cold. Uh, then relocating the apple trees out there now to, um, you can see, a little diagram of a certain column of the orchard. Uh, so that they could basically, put some better soil, I spoke with, uh, Shelley Gillian, she's a Gilead Farms, about relocating those new trees, and she said, it could be done in the spring. Uh, some of the existing larger trees around the outside would have to be trimmed, because there's some low hanging limbs, that, uh, will just have to be cut up a little bit to allow for walking track around it. Uh, then just a relocation of some of the park, just some picnic tables, so the benches would basically be on the outer hilltop rim of the, uh, seating area, so the bench, park benches. I think the picnic table's already, sort of, right area, already, sort, sort there. That's basically all the things you could do in phase one, that, sort of, immediate, not huge cost sort of options. But the survey, what's that?
The survey would be costly.
Would it?
Yeah, I.
I bet.
Yeah, yeah, it'd cost, you know.
Yeah.
You know, I think there's a survey done, now whether we just need to have, I don't know, we have to find, find that. Survey to find that.
There's no real pins there.
There may not be pins there that are fact, so basically, they have to relocate the pins, so. And then they have to do that on a time, just same thing. The good thing is, it's all open, there's no, we're gonna do any trimming.
Two sides are streets, so.
Yeah.
But phase two is sort of a little bit more electrical and electronic, so it's the solar lighting, the entire park perimeter. To put the dog park as a walking track, and go hard, the dog park that's there. Um, to put a sound system and speakers installed, and those solar light posts, so basically, if you had, uh, if that was the quarter to post, you put some facing speakers towards the crowd, so if you had. A movie from the rec center, or something like that, it could be amplified, basically, that way, pretty easy. Uh, electrical panel with locked access, in case you needed a guitar pickup, or whatever you might need, amplification speakers, so something to run through, it's just. Um, a stage background with two walls, ninety degrees to each other, basically, something that would, uh, let the wind pass through it, it wouldn't have to be, uh, you know, really, really difficult to knock over. Uh, and something that would give it a little bit of shelter to a performer in front of that, and something that would also be a screen that would need to be, you know, like.
Used.
Electronic pulldown, whatever, a white car pole, whatever we figure.
Now you're talking, right?
White car pole on that. Uh, incorporate that small roof over the car, we've done it too, so it probably has to be some kind of anchors there as well. And then phase three, uh, some really good topsoil that, uh, would allow some good grass growth. Uh, planting seventy, seventy midnits, free flower mits, a lot of bulbs, uh, which you could probably get some sponsorship for, uh, a lot of these things in this phase of the project. Uh, repainting the existing parking lines on the, the West Street, so that they're diagonal, so you'd allow a little bit more parking there, it gives us enough room, and we'll probably have to tell us for sure if.
Dog Sag was definitely better.
Yeah.
You got a back roof on the street, and you leave, so.
Yeah. Uh, and then also additions to the, well, orchard, put some cherry and pear trees in, and some hibiscus blueberries, and make that hibiscus blueberry actually an edge. Uh, you could probably do that at a couple places in the park, love to do it that way. Uh, just sort of gives us a hedge to, to break for people on the track. Uh, blueberries, if people want them, are inexpensive, sort of, grow back, ready-made hedge, right? Uh, in addition, have two handicap spaces where the street level meets the walking trail elevation, so I don't know if that would be what side that might end up being going in. But probably we'll repark today, and it might be on that side, we're not sure. But important to have access for, for folks who, you know, want to use the trailer. And then the fourth one is, uh, outdoor non-electric exercise equipment purchase and installation, and cement pads, whether that's one big pad. For that equipment, or smaller pads for smaller pieces, as grants somebody, sort of, allow for, uh, but that's, that's my fourth phase plan. My dirty.
There goes our budget. Some of the things that we possibly have, say, playground, playground, and that kind of stuff, yeah, no, it's all good ideas. Huh? Yeah. Would have to, obviously, be done in phases, unless, unless somebody like a caller committed to give a buttload of money.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But this is.
There might be someone who would cover for this. Well, there would be for some of the stuff, yes, yeah.
It's another one of those shovel-ready projects too, right?
Yeah.
The details are.
I don't know, but you buy, I see, if we're, if council's interested, go ahead, the first thing would be the survey.
Yeah.
It would, it would probably slow that, throw that into the budget, and then a lot of planning and costing, everything else, yeah.
Some of the equipment stuff that you mentioned, like the exercises, we could probably do that through dark.
Yeah.
It's dark, and burn them over, right?
Do you know how much, how expensive that is?
Oh, yeah.
That, that playground, the Montasa playground, you may remember what that was?
Yeah, I read off.
Tens of tens of thousands, I was involved in that time.
Like, there was a lot of, uh, there was a lot of grants.
Yeah, yeah, we got a lot of grants for it.
Yeah.
And that, and then that group from Western Canada meant that amount, so I think it was seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it's, well, the problem with playground, what it is, is, is a circuit standard that has to be bought and maintained, inspected.
Yeah.
Where the church, I'm going, let's put it at or something.
A lot of this could be done through grants probably too, and working, and working with Darren, or something, 'cause it is for helping all this. They get a lot of money through, but Sharon does a lot of programs that, that we, we have used at, she does help us with it. Just putting, just putting it up there, right?
Oh, yeah, Department of Health, well, that's the whole thing with this property, it's helpful, well.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I wanted to, paper two, that was that.
He's got a computer that you can take out to dark too, and say, hey, do you have this player? Karen talks a lot of that stuff.
Who?
Karen, Karen. The wall and stuff at the gym.
What are your thoughts on it?
Interesting splash pad there.
You have video built. Yeah, two hundred, yeah, 'cause you have washrooms and.
Yeah.
There's a lot of room in there for it.
I like, I like the black space, so. There is, but it makes, to me, it makes sense to have a splash pad up around the rink, where you've got the facility.
Well, that was, the initial, uh, plan was to have it where the, uh, the kitty pool was, to replace that, and, uh. But the cost and, and the other problem is, is to, to find a community group that's willing to, uh, do some fundraising and, and, uh. And until that happens, I don't think it will happen.
Yeah, I think, isn't the director reaching out for that now?
She is.
Yeah. I thought she said you were gonna work. Anyway, back to this, are we interested in looking at it, costing it?
Yeah.
Uh, survey, the survey, with the survey, we kind of decided we would start surveying our land. I think we found some. So the survey, well, yeah, we meet with the.
Yeah, I come through, if there's already a survey out there, it will save that much more money, so.
Yeah, and you can find, if there are pens left there, well, there shouldn't be, or maybe they're never.
And you just saved us ten grand?
For survey?
Can't do the whole thing, the phases, all put together.
So that's why I said in regards to the, well, the survey would be cut. So we just have to, and Tom, if we're interested, at least proceeding with that and look at the rest.
Well, it can be capital if it's part of a, of a capital project, that you'll actually have a project.
Yeah, well, it could be, I guess, but is phase one this year, phase two next year, phase three, phase four? Or is it, will we find funding for some of this there? I guess we've got to look at realistics. And could we do even, if we were shovel-ready for phase one, can we do it or will we get that work?
And there's a lot of. I think the only thing we could do this year would be to get the survey done, to get everything, to get a plan drawn to what we want to do. To be realistic, because we got, we're doing a huge project right now. We're going to be until August first, then, then we got two pieces of sidewalk to do, a bunch of streets to pave, like, we're going to be, we're going to be following that. So, right, we're us doing it, and that's how we're going to save the money. Yeah, that's right, so.
Yes, the survey is big, too.
Some of the other phases would require relocation of flower beds and trees, that, that part.
And if you can get a plan drawn up of what it would look like, I mean.
I think that's key, you survey them, then you get a plan drawn up of everything in one, that everybody can see it. Right, and then you have something to work on, or you, how you want to cut it up. This is going to be official, this is your official phase two, right?
If we were visual.
Exactly.
You see, remove the pieces too and see if.
So who do we get to do that visual?
I was coming here, that's, I always, yes, there's a few in the community that could do it.
Yeah.
You're just approaching the right way and saying.
That was, let me check on that.
So we're interested in spending, if, if we don't have a survey, are we interested in, Tom, you know, investigating the cost of the survey and go from there? Council can. Amend the capital budget any time after this, right? We don't have to make that decision tonight, or we need directions to know that you want to move forward and we can get to costing on what phase one in this fiscal year.
This is something that I've been thinking about for a while, so I just found out tonight because we were talking about it. I didn't expect it to, you know.
Yeah, no, but I mean, you know, I, I mean, if there's fifteen or twenty thousand dollars that we can throw at, throw at to get us ready for next year, right? I guess that's, that's what I'm sort of suggesting, right?
And I kind of went with the idea to keep the cost down, is just to make the grassy knoll. Not like Annapolis is where they have a cement department, and then a grass, a cement department, I mean, that's, you know. If a grant came along that allowed us to do that, great, but, you know, we don't need that.
I don't know if we should use the word the grassy knoll. There's a connotation for some.
Grassy knoll park.
Yeah, grassy knoll park, yeah. Okay, will you, so we can, we'll put together some purple, yeah, something to bring, bring back, that's always a committee of all. Consideration, okay. That was the last thing on this committee, this today, was it?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's nothing, well, there's nothing else on the agenda, so can we have a motion to approve? And don't worry about the door, because we're going to be moving into a.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to, yeah, approve. Motion to approve the evening. Motion to adjourn, and then we'll move into.
So move.
Took me long to get that, it quit.